All right. Good evening, everybody. This is the October 26th meeting of the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. Jeff Pritchard is the chair. Staff tonight is Diane Glombosky, Bruce Law, and Deb Jones. There will be an opportunity to address the commission under public communications. You'll need to raise your virtual hand. You can find that at the top of your screen on an Apple device, at the bottom on a PC, and if you're on the phone, it's star nine.
So I'll call the Planning and zoning commission meeting to order. First item is a roll call. And it looks like all our members and alternates except for Kevin Pitball are present. So they have a quorum. Our first item of business is approval of minutes of previous meetings. We have October 12th. And it's, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 12th, 2021. Is there a second?
I would second that, Mr.
Okay, it's moved in second. Does anyone have any corrections?
The only thing that I, just a little, if we could just clean it up a little bit on page two of the minutes at the very top. It's, it says, this application adds cannabis establishment to the table of permitted uses and makes this use prohibited in all zones. It's kind of, if we could just word that or put quotes around maybe some of it, or just so it doesn't sound so, it sounds awkward to me.
Okay.
Sounds like we're allowing it and then not allowing it.
Well, isn't that what we're doing?
Just, I just, I want it clear.
Well, maybe you just take out and make.
Do you want to just say that this application defines cannabis establishments and makes them prohibited in all zones?
Yeah, that would work.
Just streamline it. Does anyone have any other corrections? Hearing none, and hold on, the motion to approve the minutes as amended. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Next item is public communications. Does anyone on the commission have any communications to identify? The staff have any? Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight?
I do not see any raised hands.
The next item I see is our new business zoning text amendment. Cannabis regulations pre-application discussion. Do you want to? Or say anything, Deb, before we start? Trying to answer your 20 questions.
So, so before we start drafting any texts, we wanted to have a discussion with you all to make sure that we're all on the same page. And so we're, we're starting off with these basic questions. So in your packet, you've got a memo that outlines what zoning regulations can do, what they can't do. You've also got a list of definitions per the new 21-1 with some highlights that kind of make it easier to see exactly what, what they're talking about without going through all legalese. So, I mean, we, I mean, really, they're basic questions, you know? What uses do you want to allow in the town of Groton? Where do you want to allow them? And what kind of regulatory process do you want to use in, in approving them?
I was trying to think of the best way to, to approach it, go over each one. But I thought we'd just take each one by itself. I don't know if anyone has any general statements or concerns that they have with what we're doing. And I assume what this would lead would be a rough draft or proposal from staff. That would come back to us for maybe really looking at the details.
That, that's right. I think what, I mean, depending on the conversation tonight, I think I will approach it by, you know, maybe grouping together a couple of the uses and, and sort of suggesting an approval process. And, and making sure you're comfortable with that and then going on to the next one. But, you know, it depends on how many of these uses you think you want to allow in Groton. If it's only one, should be pretty easy. If it's all of them, we'll, you know, we'll kind of take it step by step.
We only have the one dispensary right now, right?
That is correct.
Oh, you mean existing?
That's right.
That's not, we're, we're not address, are we really addressing that or not? I don't think we're addressing the medical.
Well, I thought we were.
Right, so. Yeah, so, so the, the new law allows you to regulate cannabis establishments. So cannabis establishment has a number of different, it's defined with enough, number of different uses. So if you look at question one, we've bulleted out all of the things that fall under the definition of cannabis establishment. So if you don't want to allow one or more of those in there, we'll, you know, we won't develop regulations for that.
And some of those, some of those uses, we already might have regulations that would be easily put into that use such as maybe food and beverage manufacturing. We already have food and, food and beverage manufacturing for something that's not cannabis. And if you're comfortable with those conditions we place on that use right now, then that might be something that's easy for us to incorporate. If you think there's other specific conditions, just because it's a cannabis food and beverage manufacturer, you know, we can discuss that in the future. So, but I think just maybe going down each use and making sure you understand what it is. And then having a discussion on if you want it in the town and then potentially what zones. So.
But, yeah, but I would thought we'd just go down each one of these separately. But to answer the question on the medical use, are we really addressing that?
Yeah, under dispensary, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I, that's not the def, I don't think.
Qualifying patients.
Yeah, that's, that's the definition of dispensary versus a retailer. Dispensary would be the medical portion of that. And retailer is to the general public for non-medical.
Yeah, I think if you're a qualifying patient, that's considered medical.
Because we do have hybrid.
Hybrid, you would sell both.
Hybrid, you'd be able to do both.
No, you do both. No, I mean.
As well as the general.
That is obvious, yeah.
Well, I have no objections to any of them.
There you go.
Well, maybe that's the easiest way. It's just to say if we want to go around it, to do them all, you mean group them and wait till we get to the question two, which zones are allowed?
I, I would be on board with Barbara. Question one, I would, I would, you know, depending on how we do it, but I don't have an objection to any of these businesses establishing themselves.
Why don't we go, go on the table then with that? I didn't think it would be that easy, but. Yeah. So Hal, do you have? How do you feel?
I have no objection to any of these, any of these.
Okay, so do you have any objections to any of these or?
I just had a question. I was wondering what the difference is between, if there is one, between a dispensary facility, medical and say a drugstore, because can't the drugstores also dispense medical marijuana? I mean, maybe currently?
I know they can't, is my understanding, even after it's a special license from the state.
But they, they, they probably could, if they.
They could, yes, they could.
So you could, you could actually have better coverage for the medical side of this potentially. Since we could only have two establishments, I guess, otherwise in Groton. But if you had them in every drugstore, that'd be pretty good coverage.
You can only have, you can only have two retailers, right?
That's right.
Retailers. Dispensaries aren't limited. If, if you get a license from the state, I don't think they're limiting the number in the town. The medical dispensary.
Okay, well, that would make, that makes sense.
So that would be.
I guess, well, sorry.
That would be handled differently with the state than I guess.
Right, right, but it would also, yeah, I think that's good. If you have a medical reason, then it'd be relatively easy to get what you need. I guess my other question was, once you get down to the bottom part of the list, and you have cultivator, micro cultivator, production manufacturer, food and beverage manufacturer, does this count towards the two allowed?
No, those are, it's just retailer. It's limited like two.
Okay.
And those are from what we understand with some of the texts we read, those are unlimited in the town.
Right, okay.
Cultivators and micro cultivators.
Right, oh. Well, there's, I guess then there's another question. Does that mean everybody could do it in their own backyard if they wanted to?
They have to have a license.
They have to have a license and, and you can see what the square footage of grow area is. I mean, it's fairly large.
But you think grow less, for example.
And not, I'm sorry.
Private person can have, what, three plants?
Three, I think, three, but not yet, maybe next year. Yeah, I think.
That's without.
Or someone can do three, right.
But the others are considered, the cultivators are a commercial operation, aren't they? That's the difference.
Right, it's not for home use. That's right.
Right, yeah, even the home. Home use only.
And I think the home use also requires that it's not visible from the street. So those plants have to be inside or it can't be visible from the street, from what I understood.
Well, you probably want them hidden from the street, but just a thought, but does that mean then that you could really have, say, if I get some license, you get micro cultivators, but really as many as you know, apply and get licensed, you can have quite a large number then potentially.
You, you could, and although it's something that you can regulate if you choose to allow them. You know, you can impose separation distances between the use and a number of different facilities, but you know, or you could all limit it by the number of zones you want to put it in.
Because I guess that would apply to the other things too. You could probably have unlimited numbers given they're getting a license. And, yeah, it's a question of where you want it, no.
Exactly.
Yeah, and you could do a distance between each one or some.
Or, or you could say that, you know, you have to have five acres. I don't, I mean, there are, there are things that you could do to limit.
Right. Like you do for other things. Thank you, very interesting.
So do you have any problems with any of these on the list?
I'm not trying to think it through. I don't think so, but I'm, I'm still thinking these things through.
Well, that's what I, yeah. I think we're gonna end up doing is, it, we'll have to see and it may change our minds or from tonight to when we see the draft or people get familiar with it.
Absolutely.
It's gonna, it's gonna take a few cycles to get everybody to understand the consequences and problems. Steve, do you have any concerns with the list and items in question one?
Well, I don't think I have any problem with any of the individual ones, but then it becomes quantity and where.
Well, that's what I think question two. So, control it.
You know, the outright banning of anything, you know, I would hate to have anything banned or make existing, pre-existing non-conformances. So you know, right off the bat, I guess, allowing the dispensaries and you know, but it's a question of quantity and where.
Well, that, yeah, okay. And I don't have a problem with those and any of those on the list and question one. So we go to question two, and now we're looking at where we would allow these individual uses.
Right, so.
The staff has.
Well, we've listed out the zones that we have, the residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera. And, and we take, we took a first shot at, you know, where we thought it might be appropriate, but we're really looking for your input on, on these things.
I think you did a good job.
We were talking last time about comparing it to liquor sales where bars are appropriate, where breweries were appropriate, where microbreweries just replace the names of these things with alcohol. And since we don't really have much control of it right now, but we probably should. And it seems like what, what we do here, we should want to be able to morph into have the same explanation for it as for alcohol sales.
Yeah, I would think that makes sense to use that as a starting point.
We, we don't have alcohol sales as a separate use that falls under the retail category. And so it is treated like any other retail facility.
Well, the state has, those are state, a lot of them are state laws, like hours of operation.
Right, and license.
We want to say those, we want to use the same hours that the state has.
Or, right, for retail.
Say for retail.
Yep, and you can, you can do that. You can, it explicitly says you can impose hours of operation on this.
Yeah, which, yeah, normally the state does that, but we would do it and this could do, could if we want to. So why don't we go around? And just, go ahead.
No, I, well, I, it seems as if the staff did a pretty good job, the, I mean, I, I would scratch the res, you know, the R, R S, R U, R M off the list right, right away.
Well, I mean. When we go down to the list of each item, they, they identify which zones would be applicable. And if we just go around and take dispensary facilities to see if anyone has a problem.
Oh, okay, all right, if you want to do it that way. I don't have any problem. If I'm looking at staff's recommendations, I've got my zoning, but what I did is I pulled my zoning map out. I've got it here in front of me. I'm looking at it. So it, it's very helpful that way, but the ones that the dispensary facility are N C R, M T C, I M, I'm comfortable with, with those. I don't know about that in the I M. If that's gonna be, if it would be necessary, it doesn't seem like it's really, if, if it's a place that's gonna be dispensing medical marijuana, I don't, I don't know if that's convenient to have it in the I M, but I'll, I'll wait and see what other people think.
Well, this list just says cultivation in the I M. Oh, no, you're right. I'm sorry.
No, dispensary.
You're right. So maybe the thing is, is it convenient? Maybe not, but is it harmful?
That's what I think, yeah. I think that's what we address. And then you might put conditions on where within a zone it could be done, which might be more restrictive than another business. Because you're gonna, you may have a lot of, say, drive cars going in and out of facility like this, if you only have two in the town. Yep. Where if it were a regular commercial, it'd be spread out. You might not have the same traffic density. So you might want to condition that somehow. But maybe we can just go around and if, I mean, on the dispensary facility, does anybody have any concerns with the three items that the staff is suggesting?
The three zones.
Yeah, this.
They are M T C and I M.
And that covers the existing one, right?
Yeah, it does.
What, what does a dispensary look like? Like, how big of a building, how big of a building is it? What kind of parking would they have? Are these like giant facilities or?
One on 184.
There's, there's one on, yeah, so I mean.
I mean, I'm thinking like CBS or so, that's, you know, maybe not even as big as that.
No, I wouldn't think so if they're just doing medical marijuana.
Yeah, it'd be like a small liquor store.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's probably.
They don't have a lot of products on display. Medical marijuana, they just, you know, they find out what they have before you get there and you order some, so it's, it's not that kind of a price. So it'd be a small storefront if anything.
It's still solid state technology rather than liquid.
Like, would, would it be put into another building perhaps? Like suppose, I mean, I'll just pick something because it's like, would the hospital have it there? Would they have a place where they would dispense this stuff? At Pequot or like could the hotel have a little thing that where they would dispense this stuff? I mean, I realize it's, doesn't seem appropriate to have a medical dispensary there, but I'm just, it might be the kind of thing that would. Well, but I mean, just the medical part of it.
They might in a hot for patients. I mean, just like they have a pharmacy.
Yeah, well, it seems like it's probably gonna be so small of a space that they're gonna need that it might work well in a situation like that.
I think, I think in the future, when the federal government ever agrees that it's legal, you might see it in hospitals, but I'm not sure if you'll see it in the next few years, but down the road, probably you might, yeah.
Okay.
All right, well. Hospitals and their pharmacy, they don't sell to outside people, do they, if they're not in a hospital?
Um, it depends. I mean, there are, maybe not in Connecticut. Seen it like in California.
I was just picking that, Jeff. I didn't mean that that was, I was just trying to imagine how this stuff would.
Well, I think what we should be look to answer the question two, two items is what zones it's permissible? And then I think when you get into question three, it would be how are they, the restrictions, where are they?
Okay, all right, that makes, that makes, so I'm, I'm good with that. The dispensary facility, C R, M T C, I M, seems okay.
Yeah, Hal, do you have any concerns with this zones that the staff has assigned?
None for dispensary, absolutely none. No.
Well, what about the whole list? I mean, are there any? Sure at all.
I'm good with the whole list.
I'm good with the whole list, though I think we will want to put in, as we'll get in farther, is say, what restrictions should we put?
Yeah, I think that's the next.
In terms of just permitted, I think the list is good.
Yeah.
The only one that I'm wondering, because I don't, once again, what these things look like, cultivator. So you're looking at a building that's bigger than 15,000 feet.
Well, it, it could be outside. It doesn't say a building. It says grow area. So it, it could be outside.
Yeah, could be whittles. Whittles could, could set a corn, they plant marijuana.
I don't think, I don't think we have to worry about that because of the way this stuff is produced now. Yes, back in, when we were first looking at this stuff, yes, everybody's backyard was susceptible. But the kind of quality of product that's being generated now, there's no way you can produce it just outside. It either needs to have a greenhouse plus it's on a tremendous amount of lighting because it's all artificially done. Not because they're trying to hide it, but just because that's how much light they want. They never want these things to go to sleep. So we're not talking about, we're not talking about the casual kind of thing that you got some seeds and you grew them in a pot and, and just these, because marijuana grows like a weed. But they're not growing weeds. These are highly hybridized plants and are very refined. So this is an indoor thing. Maybe it's a greenhouse thing, but it's an indoor thing.
All right, so I guess the only thing then, how do we treat things like the W R P D? Can that be then? Well, and the only one that I would have any problem with is, and it would depend once again on what the cultivator looks like and what that building looks like. If it's gonna be, you know, large buildings that are then going to be, create impermeable surfaces and that we're dealing with having to, you know, redirect rainwater because, you know, you've got a building that's 20,000 square feet. Can we put something in the W R P D that would regulate? That would be my concern. Large expansive buildings, greenhouses, whatever they are in the W R P D.
And they'd have to probably be also be on sewer because whatever, whatever treatment they're using to grow the, the marijuana, you don't want that going probably into a septic system.
That's probably the exact point, yeah.
The chemicals, I don't know what, if they do, you know, if there's fertilizers or stuff like that, that.
But that's really getting into question three, how?
Yeah, okay, but that's, that's, so we're talking about, so the cultivator is the only one that I would have. And that would be in the C R zone, I guess it is, which is kind of all along Route 184. That I, and but I think that if we could deal with it in some way that was you know, held, held to a higher standard using the W R P D regulation.
They'd, they'd have to comply with the W R P D regulations with regards to stormwater hazardous materials impervious. So when we get to that point, let's, let's take a look at what, or there and see if there's something more just because it's cannabis.
Right, right.
And the chemicals that go into this stuff are fertilizers? Do we know anything about that?
Not yet. Not yet, not yet, but with, I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of the W R P D overlay zone. Also think about the other overlay we have in town, which is the coastal zone. So, you know, maybe you want different conditions if it's placed in the coastal zone as well.
Okay, yeah, and I think for my, my point, it would just be that one application, the cultivator.
What about the production manufacturer? I mean, that what might be a large building. I'm not sure what kind of sewer or whatever that you'd have to deal with that, but.
Well, yeah, I think we're getting into the conditions.
Right, right.
Which is.
Well, that would be the production.
That's probably the complex portion.
And you've got that one listed in the F I G.
Yeah, I am, there's some I M in the W R P D. Um, one 117, right? There's not a lot of I G, I don't think.
No, well, the I G is all down at Bluff Point and.
Down near the airport, yeah.
Airport area.
And that's also, yeah, okay.
I mean, I don't care, it would be anything that you're doing where you're putting up large buildings in these areas and you don't know what's going on inside. That's my concern.
Right.
And, and probably, Jeff, I think you're right. We can deal with that when we get to the.
That's the hard, this is, yeah, question three is the hard part. Right, yeah.
What about in the R U district? That's the rural district. In the northern part of the town.
I think we ought to go around and hear.
Oh, okay.
First, sorry. No, no, no.
Hmm, no, I'd like to go, go around, yeah, but each individual and see if they have a problem with the list. Like Hal, do you have any concerns with the list as it's written?
Well, are we getting into the micro, are you?
No, we're not getting into the R U yet.
So the, the list as it is, I have no problem with.
What, but if you want to add an item? You mean like are you to one of these?
Well, then you're asking about the R U and I particularly, I don't want to add to the R U.
Oh, okay. No, I meant if you want to add it.
No, I mean, I would not.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary. I don't think it's helpful. I don't think it could be harmful to just start pushing extra things into the RU. I'd rather not.
It might be safe to limit to, as we start up on this, to limit it. Anyway.
If someone wants to come to us and plead the case that please, please, here's why it would be okay and. Okay, well, we can hear that, but initially I don't see any reason for it.
Barbara, do you have any concerns with the list?
No, I don't.
Or the silence, so do you?
Um, my only concern is, I would think at this point is the IG. Um, because that's really all surrounded coastal land and all. It's a relatively small area. But it's just right there. Things are just flowing right along sound, Fisher's Island sound, so. Uh, that would be my concern, which we could talk about later.
You know, IG in the, in the area, so she are close to the coast, you're saying.
Right, because it is the old, the same question, what's the impact of plants fertilizer, you know, on WRPD and coastal zone? That's, that looks like the whole thing is coastal zone. And it take the airport away. It's a very small area.
And that's also in the flood zone, most of that property.
Right. But it does, but it also has utilities. There is sewer down.
Right, right.
Steve, do you have any concerns with the?
List. I share, I share. Concern of the IG, because as Hal said, these things are not occurring in a field. It's gonna be in a probably a pretty substantial building. And, um, you know, just to have those dot the landscape. You know, near the coast, I'm not, not a fan of that, and I'd rather walk instead of run with with this regulation. Um, the one question Diane I had is, you know, we get to the the next question, which is, you know, how should it be permitted? Um, you know, even if these things do have a special permit attached to it, I I think it's gonna be hard to limit the number because that's usually, you know, like we always dealt with ice cream shops in downtown Mystic. That's not our job to limit the number, but in this case, I would like to limit the number. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels.
I think I do have one thing, if I can back up just because of the the level list, the only thing I might have an objection to is to have the cultivator, which could be a giant windowless um, prefab building uh, in the CR. Just because of all the places that the CR is in. Our places that the rest of us like to drive up to, our services that we usually get to. It's not necessarily neighborhood. But where it's stretched along Gold Star. I'm not sure having a giant place that's just a cultivator, micro cultivator, who cares? It's, it can be in a garage. But for cultivator, that could be something monstrous and is that really what I want to have there? Rather than someplace where they can spread out elsewhere. So I'm not, I'm not particularly in favor of that one.
Hal?
Yeah.
Oh, I I had also, I had circled that on my list as a concern, but my concern would be more in the WRPD because the CR is also up at one, I'm not learning. The the other, like where one seventeen meets one eighty-four. And up there, I don't know. What do you think about that?
Well, without more knowledge, I can't have a problem, unless we know what the problem is with the WRP, maybe the WRPD has its own regulations that will disapprove these things. Once we say, what's the runoff and what are you containing, maybe those things.
That would be my concern, size, the size of a building like this.
Yeah, so maybe maybe it is just those facts which take care of it, not the fact that it, what is growing inside necessarily. But it would be easier just to say, let's just not do it. It takes away your concern. And also, it's the kind of business that I don't know if it's the right place for it.
So one other thing to consider, um, when you're thinking about the CR is that there are a number of large buildings that already exist there. Um, there are car dealerships, there's there's Walmart. Maybe just think about using, would it be okay to, if Walmart goes away? Have it be a cultivator instead, just something else to think about.
Well, that's exactly actually what I was thinking about. And and that's why I think if we wanna steer what what this looks like, that's, I don't want an industrial use, a cultivator is an industrial use. Where Walmart is, is where you can, where people patrons can drive to, is that's, it's the kind of place all along there. Including the car places are places where you drive to. And everybody's uncle likes to drive to those places. Cultivator is not that kind of outfit. Cultivators, so big trucks arrive and take what they've cultivated away to the the places that sell it. So that's, I think that's an industrial use.
Okay, good point.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree as well.
You think we should take that away is what you're saying, Hal?
Yes.
Take it off the list.
For just cultivator, not.
Just cultivator, right.
That makes sense.
Okay, I had a question on you drop food and beverage manufacturer from from this list that was on first list. Is there a reason for that? Or you wanna say they're identical? To how we manage food and beverage manufacturers?
Well, I think, I think, didn't leave it off intentionally.
Oh, okay, that's what I was wondering. I thought, I didn't know. They should be added to the list.
Yeah, they should. And then what designations?
Um, so let's see where they're alone now.
Allowed in the IM and IG, food and beverage manufacturers are allowed in IM and IG today.
And there's no minimum square footage by the state definition. So it's just own and operate a place of business that acquires cannabis and creates food and beverages. So, so we could regulate it similar to, um, you know, the breweries. Um, small and large.
Well, we have, you know, not so much breweries, but don't we have food and beverage, um?
Food and beverages.
Beverage, small scale and food and beverage, large.
And I think we have an alcohol production too, small and large.
Yeah, we have non-alcoholic production, large scale and non-alcoholic production, small scale, food and non-alcoholic.
What zones are those allowed in, Diane?
The large scale one is allowed in the IM and the IG.
Okay.
And the small scale ones, they're allowed, well, in the RU with a special permit and conditions. And then in the CN, CR, MDDs, those are more, those are small, those are like two thousand square feet, they're sort of like artisanal.
Yeah, artisanal places.
Places.
Would you say those again? The small scale?
The small scale is the RU with a special permit, the CN, the CR, the MDD, the MTC, the MVC, and the IM and the IG. But that's very limited to like a square footage of, um,
So pretty much all zones, except for the green zones and the the single unit, single families, the RS and the R, um, and the Rs.
Um, that would be limited to three thousand feet or less production space.
But would it make sense to not have as many?
Not have as many zones.
Yeah, since you have to have a state license, it's.
Right, yeah. So we'll look at that, the, um, are there any zones you really want them in or would allow them? And then again, you wanna differentiate, I don't know if we can between small and large.
Well, do you wanna just treat it like just large and for to be safe right now?
Yeah, what did we say? Large was just the IM.
I mean, there's no, there's no limitation on square footage in the state statute on these things. So we could, we could regulate it small and large, I think. It's just, I mean, again, do you want that in the RU zone, special permit or not? Um, do you want it in Mystic, the MDD?
I would say no.
Or at least, I mean.
Because of traffic concerns.
Yep, and this, I mean, we're one of the first towns to start developing regulations, so it does make some sense to be a bit cautious, see how it how it pans out and then.
Well, it's gonna be probably limited, so. I don't think that hurts, and if all of a sudden everybody wants to do it, I don't think we want to. You probably wanna have some control of limits.
I I would like to, I I like the idea of the small scale and large scale. And I also, uh, agree with, uh, the walk and not run comment. So I, um, maybe some of these small scale could be whittled down to ones that work, but and then I'd also with large scale, the IG, once again, depends on tell me how large it's gonna be. The IM, I don't have an issue with the large scale there, but the, once again, same as before.
So, is there any other comments on question two? We go to really hard one.
Actually, before we move off, let's get those questions at the bottom there. So it sounds like I'm hearing cultivator and micro cultivator not in the RU zones.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, and then I'm thinking if we are, so production manufacturer allowed in the CR. If we're not allowing cultivators. So that's.
The R would probably be a big building also.
It would be a big building, so probably not there either.
Correct, I agree.
We got it. Okay, thank you.
All right, then on question three, how do we control? Control these?
Or or just the perp, the way to permit them, um, you know, if you decide some of these uses should be conditional or by special permit. Um, but that's a topic for for another meeting, what those conditions should be and what what kind of conditions should be imposed by a special permit, but I I think we're interested in whether or not you just want to, you know, the ones that are permitted, they're just permitted, you know, as long as you meet your parking calculations, you can, in landscaping, you can go ahead and and install the use, or do you wanna have a bit more control over these?
Special permit.
I think so too, special permit.
But but especially at first, you know.
But but let's talk about it with individual uses. I mean, for every single one, every single one of these uses, do you wanna do it for dispensary, a special permit, or would conditions be set?
I think it would make sense to have conditions just so we have some ground rules as to how we make a determination, rather than just leave it wide open.
Well, you could have conditions and a special permit.
Depending on what area, yes. But I would rather do conditions if we, if we can write them up. So we don't need a special permit.
Yeah, some of the things you might look at special permits for is if it's adjacent to a residential district. Some of the, you know, CR districts are right adjacent to residential property, um, things like that. You might want a special permit for that. Um, so maybe based on locations like that or what they're adjacent to. And then the size, yeah, a large production facility, I don't know.
But then you might be next to a school or something too, so I wonder, don't want some buffers for specific things. I think residential would be one of those in schools, churches, maybe.
But some, I mean, a retail operation, you probably wanna limit it to areas that have good street access.
Right.
The highways, I don't know how the town, the town defines streets in certain ways.
To a certain.
High amount of traffic on.
Yeah, right, a high classification of a street.
Don't, there's a term for it. I don't know what is.
Right, yeah, it's.
But there's one above a collector road.
Artery.
Arter, arterial.
Arterio. Because you may have a lot of people coming and going if you only have one place in town to go. Unless they all wanna go down to Carson's.
That's different zoning.
I know, but they might have the store, the store everybody wants to go to. I don't think so, but I mean, it could be possible. But I doubt it.
Um, any other?
Well, I'll I'll still say that I think there should be some kind of mechanism to limit the total number of uh, retailers and dispensaries in the in the town.
Or retailers are limited by state statute.
It was a problem with dispensaries. I think if every CVS started selling it, we wouldn't even notice.
No, not dispensaries.
But for retailer, I want this to be the the retail cannabis Mecca of the southeast Connecticut, so I kind of agree.
Well, defines retail retailer, does that imply that it's for off-site consumption only, or can you open it up as onsite?
No, I think. Yeah, it's just, they'll cannabis to consumers and research programs. So, but that could be a condition that it's not.
So I was wondering whether we have to condition that. Let's say it's all only for allowed for off-site consumption. What make you like a package store for?
Depending on where it is, does it harm? I'm I'm thinking as a business model, boy, would it be brilliant to serve cannabis and food. He would sell so much.
So you wanna have a back room.
Sell so much food, the pizza would be fantastic. So, I I honestly, so how how do you kind of limit it? If one of, if one of the things I sell is a legal product, if they sell liquor, we're okay with it.
So, that's your, that's your economic development.
I I go back to the idea of it's okay to sell liquor and food, then it should be okay to sell cannabis and food.
But they're licensed differently.
They're licensed differently, but but the the issue is very similar.
No, no.
The retailer, it cannot be consumed on the site as a retailer?
We don't know, it's silent.
Don't know. It could be, but you might wanna have different conditions if it is.
Well, you couldn't smoke it.
Right, I think the, um,
They have edibles.
The town council is is talk is talking about it tonight, actually, about where you can smoke marijuana in the town. I don't think you can limit the edibles. As far as where you can actually, you know, if you're on town property and you're eating some Gummies or whatever.
Well, I'm, I'm like, okay, so we have retailer. CR, MTCIM, could someone be a retailer? And have a bar of sorts?
I, I, that's, it's licensed by the state, I, I'm not sure whether they're going to allow that.
Yeah, okay. No, I mean, I'm just wondering how we're.
Right.
I mean, I don't have any problem with someone like, the same thing again, if that were the case. CR, MTCIM, I'm okay with those, I don't think that. You're gonna have bars. Cannabis bars up in the IM, but maybe. I mean, you could, I suppose.
One issue that's kind of out there with cannabis.
I don't know.
Unlike other things, why you say you can't smoke it, but maybe you can, as you say, have. Gum drops that are laced with the stuff or whatever. Is that right now, I don't know what levels we have. If you leave a bar with more than a, a couple drinks in you, in, in my case, I can have three sips, and that's as much as I can take before I can drive. And still drive, but with cannabis, I don't know what level it is that you can drive. So if, in fact, if we have establishments that are selling it for use in the establishment. And then people can get into their cars and drive. It's quite possible that they will instantly, it'll instantly be an issue. We don't, I'm not sure we even know how to test it yet.
It's why you go with the designated driver, Hal.
Yeah, well, that's what we do with booze, but.
I think that's the same thing with employers, I mean, somebody goes out to lunch and has a few drinks, they come back, well, yeah, you can. Potentially test them, but they go out and have marijuana or whatever and come back. There's no, I don't know how you can test there.
Isn't that one of the real?
I guess they do it now, so I don't know.
Yeah, you can, and it's, and I promise you with, with the, the subbase and with EB, they are testing, but. But for the rest of us, no, we're going to say, hey, welcome back for lunch, uh deposit some urine over here, we're gonna test you. We can't get there.
But it's the amount that I thought you can't, can you really tell?
I don't know.
I think we can only tell the presence right.
It's only, yes, it's a, yeah. Yes or no?
Like, we can't cover that here.
No.
No. But it might be a condition if we wanna. Just say off-site only, or if we wanna have a special room for. Pizza and marijuana, put it on your pizza.
How do we regulate how, like what Steve was speaking of earlier, how many? We get, I'm kind of like, I think, okay, first I would think, well, maybe we could put like a distance between establishments. But then I. But I also know that very often these kinds of things want to congregate. Together. You know, you know, just like McDonald's and Burger King and all the fast food places all. You know, seem to follow the hoteling's principle, so. You know, I would imagine these things would also wanna do the same kind of a thing, but. I also understand how you, like what Steve was saying, is that how do you limit the number of?
You can have a hybrid kind of limitation in there, just saying they're convenient more than X number in X number of square miles. So they could all be right next to each other, or they could be spread out all over, but within a certain distance, you can only have X number.
Well, right now the state's limiting us, right? But that only lasts for how many years, and then it opens it up to greater number.
Right, to twenty twenty-four, but, and then, and then I don't know what the state's going to do.
They don't know either.
Right, right, so they may continue without limitation, they may, they may increase it, I, I, I don't know.
I guess, I guess they could increase it without changing the statue. Isn't, isn't that what would happen, because it just says two until. Whatever date it is. Which would imply that they could, maybe that's why they wrote it like that.
Oh no, I'm not, it's a, it's a big bill, I'm not familiar with all of it, it may, you know, it may say that, you know, the Department of Health has to. To develop some regulations that. For it, or the consumer protection has to, and, and maybe that's where they will make the change when they. Develop their, their licensing program.
I'm sure for a new law, they're testing the water also, they're seeing how everything works out. Yeah. Is any problems?
So, so we can talk about, I mean, there may be some conditions that will. Will practically speaking, limit the number. Um, separation distances between, between facilities or. Or, you know, between the facility and the school, the facility and the church, that, that kind of thing, um. Yeah, you know, as well as the small, uh, the, putting limits on the lot size, you know, you have to have X number of. Of acres, you can do it, I mean, there may be some other ways to, to limit the number. Of course, you know, once you start doing that, there's always. There's always unintended consequences where it's like, I didn't mean that, um, but, you know, we can. We, we can come up with some things, and we can, we can talk about.
I would, I understand what you're saying, that the thing, what, when, and when I look at where the schools are. They're not, the only one is Colnaski is the only, is near to the CN. Uh, the other schools really aren't near, they're in our, you know, our zones.
Most, it's true.
Yeah, there's not really, so that's not an issue, and then the church, I sort of have an issue with that because. Churches can establish themselves anywhere, you know, they could be in a storefront, and then nobody's gonna be able to go into that shopping center. Uh, there was a church, I think it was Steadfast Baptist on Paquonic Road across from Gabriel's. And that would then eliminate that whole downtown area. So I mean, I think that sometimes we think of churches as these big buildings with staples, but they're, sometimes they're just a storefront.
Right. Yep, it's true. It is, and, and you don't, um, require separation from these type of uses for anything else. I mean, some towns require it for bars or for liquor stores. If we, we don't require this for any type of use, that they be, you know, X number of feet from the school. Or religious.
We don't, I thought we limited strip clubs.
That might be. That's not through the zoning regs, that's the town code.
It's town code.
Yeah, and you're right, that's a moving target, you know, it's, um. We, we'll have to, we would have to craft that very carefully, you know, ones that are in existence, you know, once this, at the time that this use is established. That, not that a church moves in and sorry, you can't be there, or, you know, we'd have to. Be careful with the language.
Uh, that would be my concern.
Yeah.
Just while, while I'm thinking of it, just because I, I'm thinking of like the, the liquor store. Newly increased in size liquor store, store down in Paquonic. Which makes it, at this point, it's much easier to buy liquor. Than it is to buy groceries in Paquonic, I don't know where you do it. Where you get, you have to get a gallon of milk someplace, it's easier to get liquor. And the advertising for it is, is, is incredible how much advertising there is for liquor on the store. And that's where kids are all over the place, and that's a situation that I'd like to see. That's at least looking forward to making that not happen.
Yep, you can, you can put limits on the signage.
The problem with that, um. Yeah, I think we can get into that in a different.
Let me just put the signs up. On the inside of the glass. Then it's okay.
Now, well, we've limited it with these new regs to fifty percent. Before it was unlimited for window signs if they were on the inside, and now we've limited it to fifty. There probably are some signs at, at package liquor store that aren't. In accordance with the zoning regulations.
And run on Route One is, got all their windows blocked. And I remember it was a police concern, when we were doing the sign, um. Ordinance or the, the sign regulations, it was a police that wanted to be able to see inside the store and see if there was anything going down. So these, they're kinda hurting themselves.
Maybe that's something we should be addressing or maybe limiting. More, I, I don't know. That would, uh, I think that would probably, Hal, is your concern with it? And Paquonic, the signs and the advertising that goes on, or just the proxy?
Both. Both, the, the signs make it completely obnoxious. And so, you know, fifty percent, that sounds okay until you see what fifty percent looks like, I think it should be. Maybe fifteen percent. Um, you just don't need to advertise that much on the outside of the building, we don't do that on any other store, having. Covered with advertisements, unless there's a special. Maybe Burger King does, but even then, for the most part, they want you to be able to see inside. If we're going to make liquor sales not as attractive. Then, uh, it, it should be the signage re-taken down, to be way down, up there with. With, uh, I don't know, cigarette sales. You can't put Winston up there, so let's not have Picardies up there either. But I'd probably, it'd be a losing battle to try to completely eliminate it, but it should be dwindled right, right down.
What about the Valero Station on Fishtown Road or?
Yeah.
That's the one has, I think that was about a hundred percent.
And that's, that's before the zoning regs changed, and they're probably gonna say, oh, we're now legal non-performing. Cause they've always been up, so.
Wait, that gas station came in way after our signed regulations.
The fifty percent changed in the two thousand nineteen regs.
Two thousand nineteen?
Yeah.
Yep.
But the other thing is, it, all the signs have to, when you make sign regulations, and we've discussed this before, it has to be content neutral. So you can't limit. You can't limit what they say, so I don't know how the state is saying we can limit signs for these, um. Cannabis facilities. Unless you limit it the same for everything else, because you can't say just because it's cannabis, you, you have a different. A different sign regulation.
Well, I think what Hal was suggesting, the fifteen percent. Maybe that's where we should be going anyway, because it seems as if the, these kinds of establishments, these kinds of businesses. Are the biggest abusers of this stuff. Um, Big Y doesn't have their. Windows plastered with, uh, the price of broccoli.
Right.
So, um, maybe, maybe that's, maybe, and that's a different. Uh, zoning reg that, but maybe that one needs work, we could put Bruce on it. And I would say fifteen percent would be a lot, I, I would say ten. You know? I don't know.
Could honestly, it depends on how much window you have, and I kind of respect that.
Yeah.
Diane, do you know if any overlap exists between, cause I know there's limitations on cigarette smoking and advertisements. Is there any overlap with cannabis?
As far as I, not from, not at the town level, because we can't.
No, but from, from a federal level.
There might be some from the federal level on what you can do.
Yeah, I think we should, you know, poke that a little bit and find out if there is overlap, because. I know that there's a lot of things about targeting, smoking cigarettes to kids, you can't advertise in certain magazines, you can't, you know. Do a lot of things.
Right.
And I'm just wondering, you know, would you wanna see posters and advertisements going in? News flyers that are going to the high school and blah, 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 you know, so. You know, buy your cannabis right down the street here.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the state. That, the, the state law actually spells out, you know, what these signs can say and can't say. Um, again, I, I agree with Diane, I'm not sure this is, this is legal under the Reed decision. Um, but the signage, um, can't be targeted or be designed to appeal to individuals under twenty-one. Um, it can't claim or imply that cannabis products have curative or therapeutic effects. Um, can't be visible to the public within five hundred feet of an elementary or secondary school ground, recreation center, childcare center. Playground, park or library, it can't include the words drugstore, pharmacy, apothecary, drugs or medicine shop. And it can't advertise any specific brand of cannabis.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know if we wa, if you would wanna regulate any of that, you might want to add a, add a. At a point, just say you need to comply with state requirements for signing or something like that.
I, yeah, I agree.
Sound like it's. It's gonna be able to allowed in the CBS. Wasn't that one of the? If it says that they're selling drugs?
Right, it can't use the word pharmacy, the signage for it, so I, um, again, I, you know, there. I don't think this complies with the Reed decision, you know, it's, it's not content neutral, so I, I think Diane's right, I, I don't think we wanna. Step into this.
We shouldn't do it on a zoning, right?
Right.
That's, that makes sense.
Yeah, no, and, and just regulate it like we do, and everyone's signed, which is probably more appropriate, right?
Exactly, yeah.
Seems like the people, like the businesses that are, to me. Most offensive with the signs are the same kinds of operations, and this probably would be one of them.
And maybe their, maybe their state license will require all these things that they're saying that Deb just listed out. So I don't think we should get ourselves involved with what a sign says for a cannabis, cannabis establishment.
Yeah, that's.
Number of them and the.
Yeah.
Size, uh, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter to me what it says, I mean, ob- obviously it does matter, but not as a zoning. Issue.
Right, right.
It's not, yeah, that's a good point, not a zoning. Issue.
But you can change, if, if you're, if you think liquor stores right now have too much signage or whatever, or window signs are. Too much, I mean, through part of this regulation, you can actually change our sign regs. To limit it to, you know, less than fifty percent for window signs or something else.
So now for that.
Yeah, I would be agreeable.
Absolutely.
To that as well, got two votes. Three.
I would like, I, I hate to, to be too specific, but there's a, a furniture store in the, in one of the Groton Shopping Centers that have had. Signs up on their. I don't know, mansard roof. For probably twenty years now, and they're supposed to be temporary, they say sale.
Oh, we're going out of business.
They're going out of business, business.
So, does anyone have any other comments on? Then on. How we control the uses?
Um, Jeff, just, uh, getting, reaching back a little bit to the, um, we were talking a little bit about the impact to different zones. I think it would be worthy, I was just looking on the side, there, um, there's a lot of good articles about. Marijuana growers and the impact to the environment, and I was just looking one now, and it says, you know, um. From water consumption to electricity usage. To carbon footprint, I mean, there's, there, there's a lot of stuff here, you know, I haven't read it all, but. I think it'd be worthwhile for staff or, you know, the commission to read it. So, you know, the water consumption alone seems like it's, um, you know, something that, at least we know about. We don't necessarily have to regulate it, cause I'm sure that I'm gonna have to figure that out, but. At least so we know what's, um, what's going on. So, you know, if I, all I did was just say the environmental impacts of marijuana growing, and you get tons of hits.
So you're a lot of water, you're saying?
Yeah, they, they were saying twenty-two. Um, this one day, they were saying twenty-two liters per plant per day. Um, this one day, they were saying twenty two liters per plant per day, something like that.
Wow. It's almost hydroponic, I think, isn't it? Say anything about electricity consumption?
Yeah, and that's big too.
Yeah, because you got lights all the time.
Yeah, and it's also heated usually, so.
Right, kept pretty warm and lights are all the time. So I just wonder if we, if we touch on that, which I I think we might want to. But I'm not sure how much, if we talk about electricity consumption, that's gonna hit on. The town's courting a data center. Since I think that is mostly in in electricity.
We'll do some research and get you some more information on on cultivation.
Yeah.
Yeah, this particular one is from Green Camp and it says marijuana environment, green rush, not so green after all.
So that would mean we'd want to restrict the. The amount.
Or or maybe once we get that information, you want to rethink whether or not you want to allow it.
Good point. So do you have enough information now, Deb?
I think so.
Would make sense to just try to come up with some rough. Uh, words on how you want to do it rather than spend a lot of time with it and then go give it back to us to. Look over again.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't want to waste time and come up with a, what looks like a final product right now, because I don't think we know enough. And when we look at it as a whole, we may see some holes that we missed or.
Okay.
Because like, like you say, we really don't have a lot to go on. I don't know if these other states. Like Colorado and Massachusetts have much. Offer or completely different?
If I could just ask one other question too of staff, I'd be curious about. Say you had a manufacturer and what were we saying, twenty thousand square feet was the size, I think? Um, but whatever it was, I'd be curious to know approximately what the tax benefit to the town might be from such an operation. Um, because sometimes the tax benefit from these different things. Such as retailer or cultivator, whatever, are quite different. Um, and so if you're into growing it, is there really any kind of large tax? Um. Benefit to the town? Do, is there any way where we could get a breakdown and what's really beneficial, I'm trying to say, because we know there was potentially some negative things. Particularly for growing it, I guess, so are there any offsetting pluses, maybe that we're missing?
And, yeah, I can, I can talk to the tax assessor, um, I'm sure she's given some thought as to how she might. Assess the value of these uses. Get some information.
What is the, what are the uses that we're allowed to charge the three percent, is it just the retailer?
I think so, yeah, it's just the retail.
And that's sort of limited as to what you.
What you can use it for, right?
It's really not a big plus, is it?
Right.
That's interesting. Very interesting.
But the other taxes are, they're real estate taxes you're talking about, it's just based on the cost of the facility.
That's right, real estate or any other taxes, you know, but yeah, basically real estate. And if you have a manufacturing building, I can't imagine it's going to be huge.
One of those metal buildings, probably.
It's not like you're getting Pfizer in by having a growing of marijuana or something.
Well, the city will make money on their water system, because they lost all the, huh, all the uses of Pfizer's and EB's.
And the electric, if it's in the city.
That's a pass through, yeah, that's right. So the city will be rich.
Richer. Richer, right?
Right, then the town will have to give them so much support.
Thank you very much. I I pay my taxes to the town.
So, Deva, do you have anything more that you?
We'll take what we heard tonight and start thinking about, um, how we'd structure this. So, that's good. Thanks.
And Bruce will put his fuzzy background on, so. It will look good, right? Okay, so moving on to. We have any new applications?
We do. Even after the agenda went out, um, a car wash facility on Long Hill Road. Um, and parking expansion at the Nissan dealership on Gold Star Highway. And then Mystic Museum of Art supplied to install some kiosks and a park, a parking kiosks and some gates. Um, at their parking lot.
More than what they have or just a replacement?
No, they're gonna move the ticket booth and they're gonna have it be more automated.
Oh, okay, it's a no, it's not taking up more space necessarily, it's just.
It's a new system, new system, new circulation pattern in the parking lot, yeah.
Oh, are they gonna implement their new parking?
No.
No?
They're just changing some of the circulation.
They're gonna change the direction of the arrows. I see the parking, the new mystic parking lot though looks pretty, pretty nice and what they've done with it.
Yep.
It's pavement, they're all the paint stripes and everything. Looks a lot better than what it used to be. Well, my cat, I'm so, climate change will be bad. All right. No referrals, commission reports, reported chair. I signed off the drawings for the boat repair facility on Flanders Road. I guess the one for days in or ready to be signed, so we should get that done. The regional planning commission meeting that was scheduled for. Yesterday got canceled. Last time we asked about. The negotiations between the town and the respite for the development of. The oral school property, did you, you know where that stands, did they?
Yeah.
Or are they still negotiating?
Um, well, there's nothing, there's nothing that the planning and zoning commission needs to do, but, um. Down, the town and the developer are going to enter into a non-binding mediation. So, so it's, right, so that's, that's.
So it's still underway.
Right, that's right, still talking, no litigation, there's no litigation at this point.
But they have made some progress and.
They're talking.
Oh, just talking.
Yeah.
And on that issue that came up last, our last meeting over use of the rooftop. On Three Water Street. Is there action been taken on that? Safety issue.
It it is, um, I'm, I'm gathering the information for the zoning official and the building official. So, I hope I have some. Yeah, I I'm not sure the fire marshal does, I don't, I'll, I hope I have more information for you.
Well, it's for person, access to and from. The building, because it's only one stairway up and down, right?
Is, but. It depends on how it, what the occupancy rate, occupancy level is as to whether or not you need more than one entrance, entrance or exit.
Well, yeah, but is it posted?
I don't know, I don't know.
Probably not, because it.
There shouldn't be any occupancy.
I know, so again, I'm, I'm pulling the plans together for the plan, for the, um, zoning official and the building official and all. Something for you next meeting, I hope.
Yeah.
How about the screening?
No, I haven't heard anything more, no building, the building permits on that at all.
Okay. Report of commission, does anyone on the commission have anything to report?
Um, I actually attended. Meeting that doesn't exactly involve us, but it's overflowed to us, the rethinking exit ninety meeting. Which is actually Stonington, originally said Stonington and visitors, but apparently this was supposed to be just the residence and. There I was. But ostensibly, it, all the advertisements and the questionnaire that went out talked about how to improve it and traffic flow. Uh, it did come up at the meeting about trying to get more traffic down Allen Street, that discussion happened, by the way. And it also got knocked down a bit, but it's it's still kind of out there. Um, parking kind of swept its way into this discussion, saying we should have more parking on the Groton side. Uh, that kind of dropped because it had nothing to do with the issue. Ostensibly, though, this was put together by the Economic Development Commission. And all they were really looking for was to find a place for more residents to go. And they thought around exit ninety would be a place to have more apartments. Or housing anyway. Um, as a lifestyle vision being. You know, a place to, if this is sounding familiar, a place where you can live and work and play. Uh. It sounded familiar to the crowd, because a lot of things they were saying came back to the oral school issue. Though these guys at least didn't have a developer in hand, but they were as kind of asking, what would you like to have? Lots more housing at that intersection. What kind of came out of the questionnaire was that nobody thought they should have any more housing at the intersection, I think they asked the question wrong. Um, and it's strictly tourist area, it should be a tourist area, so nothing really came of it. Except that more questions happened. Uh, they were not really looking for. That, that, all the questions had to do with. How do we get better traffic flow, how do we get better signage, have you always other things? The Economic Development Commission only cared about that in terms of making it better for new residents to want to live at that intersection. The meeting quickly dismissed that and all that happened out of it was, how do we get better bicycle traffic and less cars? So.
That was Groton Economic Development.
That was. This was Stonington. This was Stonington Economic Development. And clearly, their, their whole tax was, their whole commission was only to the idea of how do we. Get more people to pay taxes, that's what they were looking at it, because they don't have enough industry to, to, uh. Uh, to pay taxes, so what are we gonna do, well, let's get some more residents was their idea.
But it would be in Brat.
Yeah, as far as we were concerned, because one of the things I remember looking at was that the downtown, the, that most of the services that were the closest. To the oral school property were actually across the river, that's was the closest grocery store. And you couldn't walk there, you couldn't bicycle there, so none of that worked. But it does seem from this, from this meeting I attended, everyone was pretty on board, except for perhaps. Chris Reagan, everyone was on board, which let's just get, find some way to get more bicycles to be the the mode of transportation, electric or otherwise.
Well, that's, that is a pretty, uh. Poorly designed by today's standards, interest, you know, exit and that whole areas. It's not very. Pedestrian friendly. But that's Stonington's problem.
Yeah, so, no, it was, it was clear, that's what everyone thought, it was, it was clearly designed strictly from a. From a highway intersection kind of thing, and it isn't even that good for that, but it does move a lot of cars through it pretty quickly, so I'll give them credit for it. But how do you maneuver pedestrians around it? Instead of it being a ten minute walk from the hotel, it's probably a twenty minute walk to the hotel, because you have to cross the street a couple of times and take your life in your ass.
Well, it's a lesson for what we want to avoid.
Yeah, when they designed, put that road in, there was nothing up there. Yeah, I grew up after.
Oh, did anybody see, did anybody else see the Nor- Norwich took their. I forget what the name of the square was and they turned it into a traffic circle in downtown Norwich.
Franklin, Franklin.
Oh, yes.
Franklin Square is now Franklin Circle.
Yeah.
Just out there, I mean, it's still, it's not the greatest place, but it, but the traffic moves through it.
Works a lot better.
Mark it perfectly well, it just flows through it perfectly.
Works a lot better.
The point is, that was around a hundred and forty feet across. The single lane, if you add nine feet to that, if you want to double it, or twelve feet, if you want to add a double lane. But I make sure, I really don't want to ever discount a traffic circle instead of a, an intersection with, with lights.
Oh, I agree.
Well, Salem Four Quarters, they put it in, it made a big difference and.
That thing's like amazing, actually, considering what it did and how much traffic goes through there.
It made a big difference.
Well, they say the accident rates quite a bit lower with those two, which I was kind of surprised, because sometimes you think, unless somebody's been in the UK, they're used to them. They're a little hesitant, or the one in Salem was really pretty involved, you know, figuring out where.
That's a confusing, that's a hybrid.
That one's actually textbook, if you look at the M U T C D, where they actually defined how these things go and the Army Corps of Engineers was. Just kind of pushing it on the Navy to start doing these things. And it's, it's right in the textbook, is you can pick out Salem Four Quarters is one, they gave you the recipe for doing it. And exactly that way, and so. They've been doing this all over the country, uh, we shouldn't discount them, they've been.
Well, Europe is, that's the way they get around.
That's right.
But not Salem style, no.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I attended the Thames River Heritage Trail. Annual meeting about a week and a half ago, I was, my, I went with my wife who was actually invited. But, uh, they are making a lot of progress, they got a new director. And, uh, I I wasn't aware of it, but the town, the parent. Lee is working with the Navy and there's gonna be the new doc at Nautilus Museum. And that will include the boat, then we'll go from New London to Groton City and up to the base, uh, to visit the Nautilus, so that's a. I think that's gonna, it's apparently doing a really great business and, uh. A really positive thing, I know we discussed this before. Years ago, when it first started and, um, seems like it's taking off. That's it.
So anyone else, else have anything? Move on then to a report of staff, the staff have any?
Last meeting, you'd asked where we're at with the parking management, um, study that was done. Um, by John Burke, the traffic consultant. Um, on the Groton side at least, um, our next step is trying to enter into cooperative agreements with some of the. The parking lots at the churches, um, we've had initial contact with them and then. The next step is to try to codify what they'll allow and when they'll allow parking. Um, the other thing that we're working on is trying to designate an area for employees and try to get that portion figured out. Um, so we're, we're trying to implement some of the, the easier recommendations in his report.
Great.
Anything else, Deb?
Have anything?
Does anything, anybody have anything else? If not, then I'll make a motion for adjournment, is there a second? So we did pretty good tonight.
All right, very good, we'll see you in the next weeks.
Be in two weeks.